We'll call the order of the planning commission for August 12th, 2020. And I guess we'll go to the approval of the minutes for July 14th, 2020.
Aye.
Okay, you got a couple of questions?
Yeah. At the bottom of the first page, it mentions that I inquired about those lots would have access on Weaver's Point Road. And I also asked, who would enforce violations of access to Weaver's Point? The staff responded, it was not up to the city, regular enforcement was the responsibility of others on the road. I would like to see that paragraph added.
I agree. Yeah, I remember that.
Okay. And I also have another comment. There's no mention of the individual that came forward during, I think it was the open forum, to speak about the rental of homes to large numbers of noisy party groups.
Wasn't she kind of anonymous? You know, wasn't she kind of, she didn't want to be?
Well, the person did not want to identify themselves by name, but it's still an issue that they brought up and then we talked about.
It can be added to the minutes. If you don't, it can be added to the minutes even if you don't know the name. If you would like to add it to the minutes.
I think it ought to be in there that it was discussed. It didn't have any verbiage other than "commas" for a rental of homes to large noisy party groups. It was discussed. Other than that, I have no...
Marson, do you have anything?
If it be approved, it's amended.
Okay. Got a second?
One second.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
Am I supposed to vote? Jerry?
No. Unless you, unless you do not vote with the majority, you don't need to express your vote.
Okay. I guess we'll have the city council on the spot report.
Yes, good evening. Council met last week. We had in front of us a number of items. One was the final plat for the Cockrude, which the commission had in front of them before the council, so that has been approved. We finalized a approval of purchase of tax forfeited land surrounding the disc golf course with future expansion plans. We also had some discussion on some CARES Act funding. The city has a large bucket of dollars that can be spent on a number of items specifically related to the COVID outbreak. And so council and staff are working towards to spending all those free dollars, if you would. And then it's also going to be discussed at the next council meeting that any unused funds can be turned over to potentially the county for them to disperse throughout the county. We also have had a proposal in front of us from Woodseth. They are going to be looking at all of our roads and grading them. So it's going to be a good outside perspective to figure out what our action plans will be for roads going forward, what would benefit from overlays, what would benefit from chip seals, or what's just the life expectancy is past, gone, and we need to start planning for repavement. Other than that, if you have any questions on anything else specific, we did also accept a resignation from a public work staff who will be retiring in September, in September.
So this engineering, this quick question, that comes with a cost, though.
Yes, I believe the cost was $6,000. I'll have to look at that exact number, but I believe it was $6,000. It was a very favorable quote. I talked with staff and they were extremely for it, $6,600. Again, an outside perspective from our engineer to go through all city roads and grade them.
Seems cheap.
Yeah. It's given us that 50,000-foot level, and if we need to, we'll start getting down. But this just gives us a high-level approach of how to treat our roads going forward.
So, I don't have any other questions? All right. I guess we'll move on to open forum number one. I guess we'll ask, right, Jerry, if anybody wants to come up and speak? All right.
He's in his own world.
All right. I guess nobody's coming up, so... We have a public hearing for a conditional use application, C 2020-002, for Randy and Linda Jameson, I guess, Harvest Road, to build an accessory building up to 1,600 square feet, 15 by 20 in height. So I guess we'll start with an open, an open public hearing, so that comes up, if anybody wants, the applicant has to do their presentation, correct?
You officially opened the public hearing.
Right.
The next item intended is the application, the presentation of what he is trying to accomplish.
Do, right. So I guess it must be that?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Javis, you are custom builders, I'll be the general contractor on this project. Basically why we're proposing this and coming in before you guys just kind of talk about the project and what we're trying to accomplish. You know, after looking through the findings, we agree with everything except for head number five, we would like to discuss that and see if we can revise that based upon the project. And what we're asking for on that is to, obviously the height restriction is 20 feet on this, or it's taller than the principal structure. The garage unfortunately is going to be a little bit taller than the principal structure. The reason being, we have such a tall structure for detached garage, is they have an RV that they're going to store in there according to 14-foot door for them to drive in and out with. The main purpose of trying to get this conditional permit approved is because what we're trying to do is keep it aesthetically pleasing to the eye, so that all that can be anybody else that drives by in the neighborhood, so you don't see something that is so critically out of place. The way it's designed right now is the both roofs are going to be 612 pitches, everything's going to be finished looking the same, the gables will be the same, same material, LP siding will be used, and same color and everything, so it'll actually flow into looking aesthetically pleasing. So that was our whole goal, of keeping it the way it is. The other thing with the property is, there's a lot of mature trees on it, and really the only access viewing point you'll have is from the driveway on, because there are trees all the way around except for that point of access on the property. So what we're asking for is if we could possibly remove that restriction on that building.
Okay. We do a staff review now, or we have questions? We can have questions, right?
It's a few.
I guess I...
You have some questions.
I had marked, and is this the item you were referring to, height of accessory structure to match the principal structure?
I had another plot on the page.
Yeah, I looked at that and looked at your drawings and assumed that that would not work, based on your drawings.
Based on the drawings, it would not work, so that's why we're asking for that to be reviewed. And the reason why we're asking for a review is to keep it still, make it look like it matches the both units, so they flow together, they look universal, and keep the roof line pitches the same, and make it as easy as possible, but still make it functional for the homeowner.
So it will look like the, like the plan?
Yes.
It's just the height and the square foot.
But the other thing with that detached garage is not going to be right next to the building, it's actually going to be according to the elevation of the survey, where it's at one, we've actually angled it, so it's not going to be right next to each other, as you see on the drawing, I just wanted to give you the height visual, so you know what the height is. Everyone is going to be twisting it up at an angle, so it's not really up against the side by side.
Still keep your setbacks and so forth.
Yeah, I mean all setbacks, yes.
What is the height difference? How much above the 20 feet is it?
I believe that about six feet, six-foot difference. And the reason being is, the four 14-foot garage, we have a two-foot difference, so you can accommodate for the garage door opener and all that stuff, they have accommodated 14-foot garage door for the RV to go in and out of.
It goes to the mid peak, or the mid of the gable there, right?
Yep, the midpoint is 20 feet.
It is 20 feet.
Yep.
What's the midpoint of the house?
Midpoint of the house, I mean just go a second.
Well, it's kind of low, isn't it?
Theoretically, they could build a two-story house and...
And still meet the...
Yeah.
Midpoint is approximately 14, 13, almost 14 feet.
So the house isn't the issue, it's the detachment, building, and the square foot.
Yeah, it's where it's at.
But that's where the conditional use comes in.
Hey, do I understand, well, there are two lots shown on the plan we have here. The idea is they're going to put a house on one lot and put the storage building on the other lot, or they're going to combine the two lots?
Combine.
They're going to combine the two lots, so they wouldn't have to have a residence on it.
And this is R2, not R3, right?
It's R2.
Because the application says R3, but that's just a guess.
So the way we have it set up is both lots are being combined, so we've already filed out with the county. And then the other thing, we're putting a house, so basically we're the center of the lot lines, go run through the primary garage itself, and then that would be centered on the properties, and then the detached would be off to the, if you're looking at it, it'd be off to the left side.
Oh. So you're proud of that house that's due the south, huh? I'm assuming that's south.
Yeah, it's all centered on the house.
Roger, I have some other questions, but I don't know if there are any questions to handle this. The discussion after he's done.
Oh, okay, then we'll have to do the staff review. Right, Jerry?
You ready?
Ready.
Okay, the conditional use application, 2020-02, the applicant is Randy and Linda Jasmine. The property is located on Harvest Road. The legal description is lots 18 and 19, block 21, and West Urch 16. The zoning is R2. The city code that's applicable here is 153.032, medium density residential, R2. The conditional use request is to construct a detached accessory structure up to 1,600 square feet, 15 to 20 foot in height. The applicant has submitted an application for a conditional use permit to construct detached accessory structure up to 1,600 square feet and up to 20 feet in height. Property is zoned R2. Property is two adjacent lots located on Harvest Road, so lots are proposed to be consolidated in a home built on the property and a detached accessory structure up to 1,600 square feet. Upon review of a conditional use application, the commission needs to consider the findings as required in section 153.119E. In review, the commission should state whether or not the findings is acceptable towards granting the CUP, if applicable. The following findings must be met: The use of the development is an appropriate conditional use in a land use zone. The property is zoned R2 and the request is appropriate under section 153.044. The use or the development with conditions conforms to the comprehensive land use plan. The use with conditions is compatible with the existing neighborhood, and the use with conditions will not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, or prosperity of the city. The following must be considered: The conditional use should not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. The conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development. Conditional use will not create excessive additional requirements on public costs and public facilities. The use does not require additional public infrastructure. The conditional use will promote and preserve the Northwoods' character of the community. The conditional use will have vehicle approaches to the property which are so designed as not to create traffic congestion. The proposed use is in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood. Adequate measures have been taken to provide sufficient off-street parking. The use is in keeping with the residential caper of the neighborhood, creating normal additional parking or loading. That should be admitted from that report. Adequate measures have been taken, will be taken, to preserve the control of the offensive odor, fumes, dust, et cetera. The conditional use will not result in a destruction, loss, or damage of natural, scenic, historical features of major significance. The conditional use will promote the prevention and control of pollution of ground, surface waters, including sediment, control and control of nutrients. The applicant has filed the appropriate application for the CUP. Applicant has paid the appropriate fee for the application. Public notice of the conditional use hearing were published and sent to all property owners within 350 feet. Public hearing is being held as we speak. Staff has reviewed the site plan, CUP application. Building code compliance has not been done, but that's something that happens after the permit has been applied for. We do not have a building permit application at this point. The issues that we have here are accessory structure in height of 15 to 20 feet, which is an acceptable conditional use in R2, but there is a caveat in the R2, in the ordinance, it says the height of the accessory structure cannot exceed the height of the principal structure. I think that's probably the crux of the, the decision that you need to make. I did put in my report, an accessory structure is an appropriate use in an R2 zone?
Is.
Is.
Yeah.
And I did say the following may be appropriate conditions for approval of the CUP. Applicants shall obtain a building permit for the primary and accessory structures. Applicants shall comply with all setback requirements. Siding and roofing of principal structure and accessory structures shall be of similar material. All structures shall comply with state building code. Height of the accessory structure to match the height of the principal structure. Height of the accessory structure shall not exceed 20 feet. And the accessory structure shall not exceed 1,600 square feet. With that, I conclude.
What was the height of the proposed, the proposed accessory structure? I can't, it's shown on the drawing, but I can't read it.
Yeah, I was trying to snip it out myself. So the principal structure is 64 walls plus, I have a phone, I guess, enhanced it. But the midpoint is 24 of that.
So the P would be about 24?
Yeah.
It says 20 foot three-quarter inch or something like that?
Uh, one and a half inch.
You said it was not going to be parallel to the house?
No, it's not going to sit like you see right there.
Is it going to be forward of the house, behind the house?
Nope, so what it is, it's going to be the house right here, and I actually have the site plan, and I should have brought a copy that I provided for you. The house is going to be twisted like this, and primaries are going to be facing like this, and the other ones are going to be this. It's not going to be like you see here, next to each other, side by side, but I'll kind of take away a little bit from that, side by side, individual, and separate from the two, but also the other is more real, so you have their runway, and also don't have two roof lines drop, no water, and no one's helping between the two units.
Maybe consolidate your driveway a little better, too.
Yeah.
I kind of expanded it on my phone. If I'm reading this right, it would be a little over 24 for the height of the total to the P, or to the roof.
I believe so, yeah, I believe the difference is only like 6 feet, like 14 feet total or something like that.
But it goes to the midpoint, Marson.
There, there will be no living quarters in this accessory building.
Yeah, I don't think there's a measurement of that, though.
Again, I have discussion after you stop, so I'm done.
Okay. William, I'm done. Are we able to have a public input now, Jerry?
Yes.
Ask for anybody to speak besides?
Would be, this be the time?
This is not?
We did receive a letter on the 10th from Catherine Ayers, Allers. I believe they have the property to the, directly to the west of this property?
That would be behind him.
Behind it.
That would be behind it.
Yeah, yes. Objecting to the height of this structure.
Okay. If, if you don't mind, the way we have it, because there's a lot of mature trees on that lot, is around the, around the structures itself, we're, we're only going to be extending about 30, approximately 30 feet per yard, so the rest of the property, all the way around it, even in the front, tree lines will all be mature trees left, so you're really not going to have a middle from, from behind it.
So they're back here, Jerry, huh?
Yes.
Well, maybe I'll just ask Mike, as I drove through the neighborhood, it seemed like there were a couple of other similar kinds of building and accessory structures in that lot on the one side. Is that, is that true?
I did the same, I saw the two other units as well.
So it wouldn't be the only one in that stretch?
Right. There is actually a new pole-type structure down, maybe even around the block.
Yeah, it's actually down in the hole there.
Yeah. So you must approve that, Jerry.
Typically, they're not 20 feet in tall.
No, and it's got a 412 roof, so...
Yeah. Typically, the structures that have been approved in the past have been less than the, than the 20 feet.
Right.
Does that mean they typically had a different roof line, even if it wasn't, like this was trying to match the house? Are there different roof lines possible with that size structure that would allow the RV-sized door by a different roof line?
You can drop it down a little, maybe a little bit to let that roof out, and you're really going to take away from this aesthetic, so matching it, making everything just kind of, so that's why we want to try to do matching, so it doesn't look out of place, it looks like it's matching, so they flow and able to feel it when you drive by.
And then more of a comment, was there, so if I understand correctly, they could have built a second story above the garage in here to have the two structures having matching height? Is that a consideration?
In the, what's the question?
So part of the issue is that it's higher than the principal structure, so was there any consideration for changing the principal structure to accommodate, to have a similar height?
No, it's, it's meant to be a level, limited steps, stairs, stuff like that.
There isn't even a base to that.
No.
There's no stairway. Oh, it's a slab, huh?
Right.
612 on the garage does look, to me, personally, it looks better than a 412, but it does raise that...
Sorry. But I had it all.
Have any more questions?
No.
Close the public hearing? And then I guess we go to official action. So, you have a motion?
We can discuss after my motion.
All right.
I would move that we authorize a conditional use permit with the seven itemized suggestions and modify number five to be consistent with the drawing that's been submitted and not to exceed whatever the drawing submitted shows. I don't know if that's clear enough.
Yeah, I think so. And then Jerry, can I add something to?
You can ask as many questions as you want.
Okay. On the line item out of the seven, I would say adding that a two as per plan, can we do that? Because I know we've approved plans in the past.
It's a good point.
And when it gets built, it doesn't look anything like this.
I, I think that Mr. Donovan's...
Covering it?
Covering that, quite frankly. If there was a redesign of some kind, other than what is being proposed here, we would notice that at the time of building permit application, and we bring it right back to you.
Okay. So what happened then, huh? I have nothing to add, Marson.
Something to be added in my head, because it sets a precedent for something new in that neighborhood and that zone.
My sense, as I, as we, as I looked at it, was a couple other units were essentially the same thing that they're wanting to do. Now, I didn't go out and measure the height of the building, but it was a lower building, and, and adjacent to it was, was the building to store the RVs. I suppose the question is, do we want to allow people to store RVs in R2? We've already set the precedent.
Well, the lot right next to it, when I drove by today, had a fairly large RV just sitting parked in their driveway.
It's worse.
Yeah, and exactly, it wasn't...
Can I, can I make an editorial comment more than anything else? We throw precedent around like, like it's something that we, is the law, and it really isn't the law, quite frankly. And precedent is not an excuse to make the same mistake twice. If you think you made, if you made a decision, you think at a later date that that was a bad decision, that doesn't mean you have to make that same decision over again. Every situation is different when you deal with land use issues. Some of it deals with topography, some of it deals with height, some of it deals with wishes, wants, and, and needs, quite frankly. But don't use precedent as an excuse not to do something or to do... But don't use precedent as an excuse not to do something or to do something. Take the, the application, view it on its merits, and do the, you know, do the decision that you think is right for the community.
Well, with that in mind, too, I think this is a beautiful-looking plan. I think it gives a consistent look with what they're building for the home. And as you pointed out, there's quite a few RVs in the neighborhood or buildings and structures that are meant to accommodate them. So I would say prove those items with the additional put. I don't know if we have to be specific and say, under item five, to have it be no greater than twenty-six feet.
The, the, the one thing I'd be concerned about is you could, you could circumvent a lot of this if you put a flat roof in, but it would not look nearly as appropriate for the neighborhood, in my opinion. So I'd rather see them doing what they're trying to do now, make it look nice. Uh, with respect to the gal behind them, as near as I can tell, she probably won't, if she ever does build anything, won't, almost won't even see it. I don't know if that's a fact, but it's such a heavily wooded area. And it would be behind her.
I have a question for you, too, Jerry, just quickly, that number seven has said not to exceed sixteen hundred. They're asking for fifteen hundred, can we just?
The ordinance goes to sixteen hundred, and, and it was easier to, to go with the ordinance than it was to specify an exact square footage, because invariably, when it gets to the point of building, if it doesn't, if it's a little bit shorter, a little bit longer, then we bring it right back to you. This is one way to say, it can go up to sixteen hundred, but it can't go above it.
Okay, so that could go forty by forty, be sixteen hundred.
Yes, it could.
And then the height would get really high, and then they come in and ask for-
The height can't exceed twenty.
Right?
The height can't, did not exceed twenty.
Right, yeah, okay.
That, once it gets past twenty, it's not allowed.
Right.
Oh, wait a minute, I thought we were gonna exceed the twenty.
No, it's, it doesn't exceed twenty feet.
Midpoint.
Midpoint does not exceed twenty feet.
Okay, it doesn't.
It's exceeding, the, the controversy that you got is that the ordinance says that it can't be higher than the principal structure. There's a difference in the height between the principal and the accessory.
Is it, as it is drawn now, does it comply with the twenty feet?
As it is drawn now, here, it does, but you're about an inch and a half taller.
Okay.
That's the only difference.
Where do you measure from? The concrete?
Pardon?
Where do you measure from, the concrete?
Ground level. Ground level coming into the garage. There's a, there's a section in the ordinance that addresses the, how you measure height.
Yeah.
I, quite frankly, the ordinance says you can't go over twenty feet, so I, I think that's, that's pretty, pretty solid. And you can do some landscaping, you can make that work.
Good point. Do we have a motion to approve?
With those conditions.
With those conditions, do we have a second? Okay, good. So, yes, then we have a discussion, well, we've had a discussion for a very short. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approve. So we have to discuss the land use comparison?
I-
VRBO.
Well, I, it wasn't, VRBO wasn't really on the agenda this, this evening, quite frankly. Um, we did start a discussion about lot size requirements last month. We also had a discussion about minimum sizes for housing, or for houses. You asked us to look into whether communities surrounding us had minimum sizes. Um, my intent was to give you an update on that. Other than that, I, I would suggest we wait with a further discussion till the rest of the commission is, is here.
Did you get some of that?
We did. Um, Cross Lake has a minimum width of twenty-four feet.
Are we supposed to take notes?
Well, you'll get this back again at the, at the next time, I'm just, I'm just giving you an update. Peak Rock has a minimum width of twenty feet. Um, Nisro has a width, minimum width of twenty-two feet. Jenkins, twenty feet. Uh, Brainerd has a square footage minimum of seven fifty and a twenty-foot width. And Baxter has a minimum size of twenty, of thirty by twenty-four.
Thirty by twenty-four?
Thirty by twenty-four.
What is ours?
Twenty-six foot minimum width, twelve ninety-six.
Okay.
Without a garage, nine seventy-five, with a twenty-two by twenty-two attached garage.
Sounds to me like we're not way out of line.
Well, twenty for the Peak Rock.
I assume the point originally was to try to minimize double wides?
Right.
Was, that's why, wasn't that why they came up with some of these widths?
Well, it was, the limit, mobile homes in residential neighborhoods is really what it was.
Yeah.
But, uh, that twelve ninety-six, that one always kind of, that's a pretty good-sized house.
Well, you don't see a lot of people doing twelve ninety-six, because they don't do a house without a garage.
Yeah, sure.
And based on the activity that we've seen this year, um, it's not a hindrance at all, quite frankly.
Right.
I suggest we, again, table a special-
Next meeting?
Hold.
I agree.
I agree. What was this letter, then, included in the package for?
That letter is for your information, it came to the council, it's just an FYI.
Will the council discuss any of that?
I don't know where that's at, I, I can tell you from a, and only because, just give you an update, based on, uh, the city attorney sent a letter to the, to the, uh, the folks that were doing the, the vacation rental.
Right.
Uh, we have not gotten anything back from them or from the city attorney at this point, but there hasn't been a letter sent by the city attorney.
Um, it, it's my sense, and I'm, I'm not sure what the procedure is, but my sense would be to get this group to agree on recommending to the city council, because I don't think we have any authority to do it or not do it, recommending to the city council that they pursue maintaining the existing Breezy Point rules and regulations contrary to what the county wants to do.
I, I, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, you could put it on the ballot, remember?
I, I don't know that the ballot is the proper place for something like that, quite frankly, if not, if, if it would only be advisory. But I would, I, I would say that I, I do think this is a bigger issue than a recommendation from the planning commission. I think this is an issue that the, the city council really needs to delve into and, and provide some, some guidance and some policy. I think you can make all the recommendations you want, but if-
I didn't know that we had any more authority to do anything beyond that.
You, you really don't.
Okay, and then the other, the other thing was, um, uh, the existing rules, as I understand it, if you, if you have, was it four complaints? You, you can rent it out four times a year, four, right?
Right.
Uh, was there, is there anything in the existing Breezy Point about if you receive a complaint? I know the county, if you receive three complaints, three legitimate complaints, they can lose their license, but we figured that was-
We do not have anything.
No, okay.
Gosh, I thought there was something, there isn't, though.
We do not, we do not.
Okay.
Well, I personally think that there ought to be something in there. I know, you know, we're reluctant to enforce, but if there are complaints against the renters for the four times, that ought to be some way to, because I guess they don't need that permit, they just can do it.
Well, if we get a complaint, we try to deal with it internally. If that does not work, then we're, we're giving it straight to the, the city attorney to, to start some legal action. I think this is gonna be a test case as far as what's gonna happen. The problem that we have today is that because of COVID, getting into court is a real bear. Taking something to court today probably takes you out a year to, or more. It doesn't totally solve the problems.
But don't we have to kind of kick this can down the road a little bit to kind of?
Well, we're not trying to kick the can down the road, but quite frankly, there's, uh, there's all kinds of issues.
Yeah, moving on.
So at this point, the county, that is, that in effect with the county, correct?
Pardon?
With the county currently, that, that new regulation is in effect, is that correct, that they did?
I don't believe it's in effect yet.
I thought it was January one.
Yeah, I, I believe it goes into effect in January.
We've got a few months to-
So, so it seems to me that we need to take a position before January first. We, the city, that we're gonna say no. And I assume that's gonna require our attorney to see if we can legally do that.
Well, I, you know, that's where the city attorney's gonna, gonna also weigh in as far as what we can and what we can't do. There's some real gray areas here.
We got this extra funds, Michael, that we can use for the attorney, just kidding, but, uh-
That's not directly related to the-
Yeah, kind of, but not really.
I'd be curious if the other cities are doing a similar exercise, because I can't imagine that Nisro or, I guess, the other areas-
Or Cross Lake, uh-
Concerned, reviewing their policy.
I, I read something today about one of the other communities around here that was stepping back and waiting to see if the county's process is gonna work.
Well, it's basically just a fee, correct?
Pardon?
Application, it's a fee that they're charging for a one-bedroom, and two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, et cetera, right?
I believe there's a fee that goes with the application, I do not know what that is.
Yeah, I thought we, we had something in writing, it was a one-bedroom was two-hundred-and-fifty bucks, and a two-bedroom was four hundred bucks or whatever.
I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
Just as, as a side of what is going on, we have some friends that live in a different city, if you will, and live on a relatively small lake, and some people bought a house and refurbished it, and they're now VRBO-ing it. And their lake is so small, but the people are apparently bringing in their own pontoon boat. Uh, there is no boat ramp, so it's going right in off the beach. Uh, it's been out at night with no lights on, with, you know, twelve people on board, and, and they're also advertising in their VRBO literature, it's a great fishing lake, and this is just a little part. And if, if it becomes known as a great fishing lake, there aren't gonna be any fish in it.
You know, the, the real bottom line, though, is that if, in fact, there's people breaking the law-
Oh, so what do you do?
Number one, you call the cops.
Okay.
We've had a, uh, down from this house that we got the complaint about a month ago, there's a duplex that has been rented for the last twenty years, or since that duplex has been, been-
Built?
Built. We've had complaints from some folks about that duplex in, just in the last two weeks. Um, after we found out that the resort was the rental manager, and the cops were called several times, the shenanigans quit.
Called enforcement.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and, and the cops gotta be called at the time that something is done, not ten days later, or-
Or not Monday morning after the weekend.
Yeah, exactly, they, they'll have to be there and, and see what's happening.
But the point is, they're taking an officer away to do something that really shouldn't be-
That's true, but it, that's, that's part of their job also.
Safety, I guess, yeah.
I think part of it, too, is, you know, we've got this comprehensive plan, and, you know, what is it that we want our city to be? Do we want residential areas to have rentals, short-term rentals? You know, I think people know if it's around the resort and some of the areas there, that that's expected, and they buy into it, knowing that that activity goes on. But I do understand and I'm compassionate to those that buy outside of there, that I think they're in a family residential area and are dealing with short-term rentals, like a, a resort or a hotel kind of thing, so.
Well, I'd like to see this group, when we're all together, come up, and I don't know if it requires a motion, and, you know, that, that we are on the record of recommending to the city council that they review this, and that they strictly, uh, that we recommend they, uh, probably resist the inference, the, in, the, the use of the Crow Wing County rule that they're coming up with.
Yeah, like Jerry said, we really don't have any authority as the city council, and we can recommend, which would be-
But we can go to the public, we can go to the public, come at time.
Any, any, any ordinance that's passed has to be passed by the city council.
Correct.
The city council is the one that authorizes the enforcement.
Right.
It isn't your job to enforce that.
We can recommend.
You can recommend, it is not your job to enforce.
So if we wanna do a recommendation on our own, is that something that we can do? Just have part of our next meeting to say we wanna discuss and recommend, is that how that would happen?
I, you gotta excuse me, I can, with the face mask, I can't really understand anything you're saying, quite frankly. And maybe it's just your voice, but I, I'm at a disadvantage.
Yeah, what's the process for us making a recommendation?
I, i- if you as a group wanna make a recommendation, I think you can do that at any time. Recognizing that it's only a recommendation.
I would like to see it on the agenda for the next-
I agree, 'cause next meeting's September, and January first is not that far away. I mean, I know we're kind of lame ducks on it, but we're kind of-
And, and the reason it's in front of the planning commission is that the council did have a workshop, and, and this was one of the items that we discussed, and it was, it was thought that the planning commission would be the best one to talk about it, develop a plan, to recommend to the council. Again, the council can do what they want, but yes, if there's some uniformity from the planning commission believing that this is the direction that the council, that the city should go, the council will take that consideration, review it themselves, but we wanted the, the commission to talk about it first.
One of the main items on the cop plan is, I think one of the first lines is the keeping the up north look and all that. Well, if you start having all rentals, I mean, it's maybe a personal opinion.
I think it'd be good if we can talk about it in the next meeting and.
If you want, I, I'd make the motion right now and the three of us can.
I, I think, I think it would look more favorably if you could have a full commission. My opinion only, one opinion.
Did you see his glasses fogged up when you said that?
Okay.
All right, so do we, do we have open forum number two?
Oh.
Oh. We kind of jumped the gun, I thought the letter was coming after, after the other one. And I just want, I don't know if it received the letter, I just wanted to let you know I was here previously, and I just wanted to make sure you know that letter is not from me, that's another neighbor, so there's more than just one person involved in that. Getting back to what you just said, I was having trouble my time, what you had said before was, years ago, the, the house used to be a Breezy Point rental, and we were instructed by the resort, do not call the police, call us first. So that's maybe why that happened.
They, they call the police first.
Well, they told us for years and years, they told us, call us first, don't call the police.
We're, we're telling anybody, call the police when things are happening, that's the, really the, the biggest and the easiest way to nip some of these problems in the butt.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you the lady who was here last time?
I was the, yeah, I was the last.
Jerry, was, she supposed to state her name and?
In fact, same, same, same way here again, because I, I didn't want to say my name, because there's been a lot of contention between anybody that does try to talk to him and then this fellow, so, you know, I would rather not. Um, but the reason why was because I know that letter came in and that somebody, I forget if it was the mayor or somebody, mistook and thought that I was the one that wrote the letter, but I was not, it's the neighbor on the other side that has written it. Um, I know there's not a lot I can say that, like you were talking about, that would have a lot of influence, uh, but I just wanted to bring up the other, uh, late Friday night, early Saturday morning, well, and then getting back to the resort, yes, it's great when the resort can step in, but many of these properties are owned, I know one for sure, that's owned by somebody who doesn't even live in the state, he lives in Washington.
This is the same property I'm talking about.
This is another one, this is a different property that, um, over kind of on the other side of the resort, that I talked to somebody and it's owned by somebody out of state, he doesn't, he lives in Washington, comes maybe every so often, he's got a management company that owns it, so in that case, the resort, yes, they can kind of patrol their, their properties, but a lot of them are not, you're dealing with somebody, you know.
All the more reason to call the police.
So getting back to that, late Friday night, early Saturday morning, we get woken up at 4:00 in the morning to a loud series of what, it sounded like gunfire, sounded like gun blasts, and we just went, you know, oh my God, what's that? And then ironically, a couple of days later, we get talking to a neighbor, a fellow neighbor on the street, and he brought it up, we didn't say anything, and he said, did you hear those fireworks Friday night? And we said, that's what that was? And I said, do you know where they came from? And he said, yes, it was the VRBO that attacked them, and that he thinks that the police were called that night, but he didn't know, he didn't know who called them or what happened.
We, we heard what we thought were gunshots at 4:00 AM in the morning, and we're, we're over near the golf course.
I know where, yeah, I know where.
Oh, okay.
It's, it was that, that was it.
And we heard them at about 4:05, because I looked at the clock when I heard it, and of course, our dog goes berserk when it happens, and it happened about 10 minutes later and then about 15 minutes later.
Yeah, it sounded like it was right up our door.
You know, I, I am first one to agree with this jury that, uh, call the police when you know, but I couldn't tell where it was coming from, you know, as far as I know, it came from my window, everything.
It was, there's a VRBO, it's called Fox Loop, that loop right up at the, the, on the top of the hill overlooks the lake, and the guy that we talked to, he, he was right over his house, because he knew that it was that house, but yes, they did, I think they called the police, but it, it sounded like it was right outside our door, we're a block away, and I know at one time, somebody had made the comment about how, you know, that this is the only complaint they've had, and I think there are so many people out there that don't know where to go, or don't know what to say, or don't know anything to do, because we were a block away from this, that incident, and I counted, and there's like 30 in a, in a block radius around that neighborhood, 30 houses that were impacted by that noise. And so I think a lot of people don't say anything.
The, we are promoting using the police. We, we believe that if we're gonna enforce anything, and, and even if it's your neighbor that isn't a, a renter, that the cops can't do their job unless the, the residents help them.
True, right, true.
And we as a, in, in our office are promoting using the police. In the case of the, the complaint last week, we use the police and we use the resort.
You had brought up a point before that I would like to reiterate, is that I think right now, the four times a year kind of controls the amount of people that decide to rent their home up, and I think if that goes away, you could see an outbreak of people do, going about the VRBO, and now our police force is gonna have to patrol all, this could get, my neighbor that wrote the letter, she came up with a great phrase that I thought was so interesting, she said, it's almost like squeezing the tooth, the toothpaste out of the tooth, and once it's out there, you know. And so, yeah, I think, I think that, and I think the resort could feel an impact, um, you take that four, four times a year away and you might be shocked at the, it might, it, it's just an outbreak of people renting out. But anyway, um, uh, it's, it's one of those issues where until it happens to you, until you're directly affected, everybody just kind of goes, oh, that's too bad, that's whatever, but once it's, you know, and when you think it can't happen to you, it, things change, things change, and before you know it, you've got, and like I said, we, we were subjected to, on both sides of us, you know, we could have 30 to 35 people in, from, in the neighborhood. But I just wanted to add that, I just wanted to let you know that I'm not the only one standing here harking about it, that there, the other neighbor has talked about it, and I think there's plenty of people impacted that don't come forward and don't, take the time, take the time to.
Well, and the, the other thing that, that helps in this whole deal, when you call the police, the police have incident reports that they have to fill out, and we have records, and it helps make the case, but if you just have, well, it happened two days ago, or six weeks ago this happened, there's, there's no record of it happening other than somebody's recollection.
Well, there's, some of these things are things that you can't call, you're not gonna call the police about, but it's just things that I think should be considered, like the number of people you have, you know, surrounding you, or, you know, just the fact that they're doing it more than four times a year, you're not gonna call the police about that.
Typically, the number of people, the, the more people you have, the more chances you are of having that incident happening.
Uh, we have on our refrigerator little star that has a non-emergency police number, which we have called on a number of occasions, and what, and I think we get the Crow Wing Dispatch.
Right.
I, I would hate to call 911 with something like that, uh, which is also going to be the Crow Wing Dispatch, but I call the non, the non-emergency number.
The non-emergency number is on the city Breezy Point website, if anybody can.
And, and, uh, on, on the two occasions I called that, I got response, once one from the sheriff and once from, uh, Breezy Point Police, kind of depends, I think, he said, one time he said, the sheriff said, well, the policemen are taking the guy down to brain, to jail, so.
They're covering for each other.
Pardon?
They're covering for each other.
Anyway, and, and they handled it well, and that one had to do with, uh, we, we thought was a terrible burning situation, that was, nobody was paying any attention to, and they came out and they took care of it.
It does, it gets kind of, like I say, a lot of these haven't been unlawful things, they've just been a consideration of what possibly, you know, could happen, um, but yeah, it does get kind of, you know, you hate to keep calling, 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 you know, that kind of thing.
You, you hate to do it, but if they're doing something wrong, we encourage you to do it.
Yeah, oh, totally, like I said, that host next to us hasn't been so much violating the law, but it's just been more of the nuisance that, you know, like a, a parking lot of cars, or parking on the street, or, you know, like I said, numerous amounts of people and doing it, it's, it's been like a hotel, it's like, I mean, and I hate to say this, I mean, it's not like I'm privileged to this, but every time I look out my back door, there's somebody out there, there's, not in my yard, but in the next yard, I think there's, it's constantly activity over there, but when you start putting that many people in a house, that's, you're gonna get that, you know, and I think the four times is a great compromise, it gives everybody the opportunity, but I would hate to see that go away, but, I'm all, that's all I'm saying.
Here goes a city council, you guys have open forum too, don't you?
Yes, we do.
Well, the only reason why I came here last month was because it showed up on here and.
Oh, okay, I'm just.
It's not on here, it's not on here, but it was on the, on line, that letter appeared online, and when I saw that, I just, I know that somebody in the state in the past and thought I was the writer of that letter, and I just wanted to let them know that, no, it's the other neighbor that had written that letter, not me.
And you heard the city council has more power than the P and Z's. No, this.
And it's not so much, it, maybe it isn't so much as, you know, the, the political aspect of all this, it's just to let all of you know, this could happen to you, you could be in a situation like this, and, you know, I'm trying to do what I can do.
I think the three of us are pretty much in.
Yeah, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have other?
I don't mind anything.
Michael?
Not a thing.
Yeah, just, I'm gonna make a comment, an editorial comment again. We're getting more and more of these big toy boxes.
Yeah.
You know, and if you're gonna disregard the fact that, we're gonna disregard the height of the principal structure versus the height of that, I think we should throw that out. I think you should mend the ordinance to eliminate it, if, if you're gonna.
But, correct, some of these guys want them, they want to put a little hoop and loft on top of it.
Well, I think the 20 feet is a, is a legitimate height limitation, I, that one I think is, is legit, but you're gonna have more and more of these things where you have senior citizens who are on a one-level house but have the big toy.
Yep. So you're suggesting removing that condition which was on here of not to exceed the primary structure, but still leaving the 20-foot height max?
Leaving the 20-foot max, um, because if you can't level 20-foot max to the midpoint of the, the roof.
You got too many toys.
You, you're probably in the wrong business, I mean, that's probably an industrial use already, quite frankly.
So who does that? I, I guess I don't know if, if we wanted to change an ordn, you know, an ordinance like that.
You can, you could recommend that the, that the council do it, or you could propose it and hold a public hearing on it, um, you can do that, you, you're gonna make a recommendation that they, they change it or they, they leave it, uh, but I think we're seeing more and more of these things happening on a regular basis, and we're seeing more and more senior citizens saying, I'm on a one-level house, but where am I gonna store my RV? You know, and, and it gets to the point where you'd rather have them stored outside in a canvas shed, or would you rather have them hidden someplace?
Yeah, like Mercy brought up, it's, tucked in a garage is better than sitting on the driveway, but.
Yeah, it, it's all, I think maybe the usefulness of that section of the ordinance probably isn't, isn't as good as it was at one time. You can still control that, you can still control the height, you know, the, the CUP says up to 20 feet, you can still control it, you could make it 16 if you, if, let's say the design was, was really bad, or the, the, what they were proposing didn't match the house in any way, you could certainly control that height to make it match in a better, better way than saying, well, it can't be higher than the principal structure.
And well, my brother was gonna put one on his new house on Ossie, not in the city Breezy, but he was gonna have a loft above it too, so you could imagine how high that thing is gonna go. Different subject than, oh, I brought that up.
I thought it was interesting, when you first pointed out, if they had built a two-story house, it wouldn't even be an issue at this point, which.
I'm sorry?
Because it wouldn't have exceeded, if they would have built a two-story instead of one-story, we would have been okay with the garage height, so, yeah.
Done?
Oh, just thinking that, what difference does it make if the garage is the same height, whether it's a two-story or a one-story?
Match better or?
I, I'm just reacting to the market, more than anything else, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the market, I, I probably answered the question, can I build a toy box, maybe that'll be the question that I'll answer.
Without a house, right?
Without a, well, even, even with a house, can I build a toy box? Or if I buy this lot, can I build a toy box on it with a house? Can I use toy box, because that's really what it is, big boys' toys more than anything else, and big girls' toys, but, um, we're seeing more and more of it, it just seems like the market is, is gonna dictate, and eventually, you know, if, if you have to vary from that clause every time you turn around, it's probably needs, means the ordinance needs to be changed.
We haven't had a lot of them on our agenda, have we?
No, we haven't had a lot of them that went over the, the 15-feet in height, and quite frankly, people can design a building that has a 15-foot midpoint height, if they design the rafters right, they can get their RVs in them.
They have low overhead tracks for overhead doors and so forth.
Well, and, and use a different type of rafter.
What kind of rafter you could build?
Attic rafters.
Oh. So we're done with others? I think we're done, are we adjourned?
You're a man.
Okay. Turn this off.